If we could have roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Holden.
Present.
Mr. Vinotti.
Here.
Mrs. Yolosh is excused.
Yes.
Darlissa Ritter is excused.
Yes.
Mrs. Gatos?
Here.
Mrs. Kupchak?
Here.
Mr. Chiuello?
Present.
Mrs. Kill Martin?
Here.
And Mr. Gunn House?
Here.
If we could please rise and salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please be seated. This time if we could have a motion for approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add, move that the addendum to the board agenda items eight A, example number three and four be added to our agenda.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made in second, is any discussion, sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So what, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Motion has been made in second, is any discussion, sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Presentation and recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight I'm going to just switch the order of the presentations A and B, and begin with B, which is the SIS Robotics Team. Fabulous team of young people who work hard, are very creative, and are truly winners. And I'd like to invite to step forward Ms. Michelle Piccolo, who is their advisor, one of their advisors, their key advisor, and she is going to introduce exactly what it was they accomplished, and they have a presentation for you, and we have a nice crowd of extremely bright kids coming forward. Watch out for the you-know-what.
We'll hold the mics probably easiest. Good evening and thank you for allowing this time in front of the Board of Education to speak about the amazing accomplishments of the first LEGO League seasons here in Shelton. I would like to begin by thanking the amazing team of mentors and parents who make these teams possible. Their help is a huge part of the success of these programs. I would especially like to mention Jim and Dana Daxner, who coached the SIS Systematic Team to their second straight state championship title. Our FLL team's success would not be possible without the support of John Niski and the Shelton High School First Robotic Competition Teams. I'd like to tell you some of the awards that the FLL teams have won this season. The Systematics competed in the New Haven Regional Tournament. In that tournament, they were granted the Champions Award, which was the first-place honor. The Persistence Team also competed in New Haven and won the Core Values Award. In the Shelton Regional Tournament, our Brainiacs Team, which is our fifth and sixth-grade team, were given the Robot Design Award, and our Predators Team was given the second-place Champions Award. All four teams were granted golden tickets to go to the state level of competition, a huge accomplishment for our program. At the state tournament level, all teams did very well. The Systematic Teams were awarded the Champions Award, which is the highest-level award at the state level, and the Persistence Teams got the Judges Award. So congratulations to all the teams in Shelton. I know that the Board and I both know the power of youth mentoring, and we have two of the finest youth mentors here in our program, and I'd like to honor them tonight. So Jacob Zomani was honored at the New Haven Regional Tournament with the John A. Baffa Outstanding Mentor Award, and Siddarth Jain was awarded at the state tournament level the Youth Mentor Award, Outstanding Youth Mentor Award. They are two FRC members who really make a huge impact on our FLL students, so I congratulate both of them.
Yay!
I'm Katie.
I'm Austin.
I'm Josh.
I'm Michael.
We are Systematic. This season began with the introduction of our yearly challenge, Hydrodynamics. Teams had to design a solution that was part of the human water cycle that improves the way people find, transport, use, or dispose of water. We began our research by going to Aquarian Water Treatment Plant, then to Jones Family Farms to see how we could help. We decided to help Farmer Jones improve the use of his micro-irrigation system because it constantly gets clogged by algae in his pond. We learned through our research that this impacts farmers everywhere, not just in Connecticut. To solve this, we created the Irrigation and Peever 3530, which uses hydrogen peroxide to kill algae in ponds. It is a unique and easy-to-use solution that we had a professor at UConn review. She loved the idea and hadn't seen anything like it before.
In the robot game, we learned a great deal from St. Louis last year, so we decided to build a box robot, yeah, box-shaped robot. This used a system of attachments that could easily be changed by snapping pieces in instead of connecting them in a more time-consuming way. This saved time, so we were able to complete more missions on the board.
Are there any questions?
So we've left the boards here if anyone wants to look at them later. So these are two square boards that we have that give a little more of an in-depth explanation of what we had to do. We did pick a local problem because we wanted to get back to Shelton, and we can tell you how open the community was. This team went to Jones's family farms, and he was thrilled that we were there to help with a community and an impact that was something that we see around us all the time. So, thank you very much.
And where and when is the next level?
The next level of competition would be the Detroit competition. We were invited to that. We did meet as a team and talked a little bit about our educators and where they're at, and that gave a lot of things going on in the spring. So as honored as we were to be invited to the next level, we did pass our invitation down to other teams who could learn as much as we did. So we did learn so much from St. Louis. The FRC competition is very different from FLL. We're very excited about someone's being part of the FRC community, so we are going to dedicate some time to that. So we did pass on our invitation to a lower team below us so they can learn just like we did.
Well, we're very excited about your victory, and we're very pleased and proud of your hard work, and I will just say for the entire community and parents standing behind you, this is a great example of excellent teaching, very dedicated and disciplined students, and parental assistance. This is what it's all about. You're a great example for the whole nation. Thank you.
I also think it's amazing that we had student mentors who were recognized at the two competitions.
Yeah, and I could say ad and ad about these two amazing guys who come and give their time when we know that there are so much things going on.
Yep.
And might I tell you that the teams benefit so much from it, and now we are excited about the FRC program because they've been part of it, so I couldn't do more than that.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Tonight is the beginning of a new tradition in our district. Tonight, for the first time, we are going to be awarding an excellent educator the award of Innovative Educator. Now, we have quite a few extremely talented educators in our district, and we have many of those people who are quite innovative. And over time, we will be recognizing more of them, and each month we'll recognize a new innovative educator. But the first one, we needed to really start off with a real Nova explosion, in the best sense of that. And this is an individual who, when you go into her classroom, you really feel transported. You step in, and there's something going on there, and you could go any time. You could go tomorrow morning, at random time, walk in, and you'll see it and you'll feel it. I remember the first time I went, I was interviewed by a group of her students for a school newspaper, and they were tough. They grilled me. And this was going on while many other things were going on at the same time, so there was this. Many activities were going on at the same time, and the students were so focused and so self-directed, and she was just orchestrating the whole thing. And as I got to know her and saw her work, it's one thing after the next. Very creative, very passionate, changes the lives of kids. When you say you want someone that's going to be in your child's classroom that's going to change their lives, this is that person. So it is a great honor for the Board of Education and a great personal honor for me to introduce our very first innovative educator, and I would ask that she step forward because she's going to make a presentation about some of the work she does. Please welcome Courtney Dishian.
Okay. I promise I will be trying not to talk too long, okay, because I do love to talk. Okay, so first I want to definitely thank Dr. Cluett for this opportunity and definitely for the recognition. And when he called me and he asked me to kind of present on this and talk about this, I kind of was taken back a little bit, and I was like, "Okay, yeah, sure, I'd love to talk about it." I also want to thank Mrs. Williams and Mrs. Crosby for kind of always letting me go outside of the box in the way that I do things and bring things into the classroom. So when I first started to think about this, I kind of wanted to think was what was innovation? Because I don't really describe myself as that way, but obviously other people see me that way. And I don't really think it is something that I am, I think it's something that just finds me because of the kids in my classroom. So this is kind of where my thought process began after Dr. Cluett had talked to me about this award, and I wanted to think about, like, where does it start for me? So for me, it starts with a connection. It could stem from just an interest or an experience or something that interests my kids, and once I find what interests them, we kind of form a relationship. And I'm sure some of the kids in the room can attest, once I know you, I stalk you for the rest of your life.
Yes.
So this is where I kind of start, connecting in the community. So I'm a big picture taker, I take them all the time. My Twitter, my Instagram is filled with them, being out in the community, because what's important to them becomes important to me. And if I have those good relationships, then it turns into the projects that we do in the classroom. So you might even see some familiar faces. These are just some of the things that I've done over the years. We have the outdoor classroom that I was on the committee forum, we kind of started, and the kids got in deep with that, and we have a lot of fun with that. A lot of my projects are recycled material-based because we work with what we have, and you can find recycled materials anywhere. So we've done recycled bird feeders and an alien project based on the planets. We've done music makers, where we make different musical instruments out of recycled materials. In the past, we did Boo at the Zoo they have in October at the Beardsley Zoo, so we made Scarecrow out of all of the moon faces, and we put it up at the Beardsley Zoo. I bring food in whenever I can into activities and things because who doesn't like to eat? And just kind of thinking outside of the box. So I do a lot of STEM activities and a lot of different things, these are just a few in the pictures. We did Elf for the Shell, Shell for the Elf out of Play-Doh and sticks, and whoever got the highest kind of won. We do a lot of hands-on activities in my classroom. The staycation actually was that one week way back when, when we had April vacation and we had to go to school, so every single day we went to a different place. So that was really fun. For Valentine's Day, because they're a little bit older, we don't do Valentine's Day cards anymore. Every kid writes a compliment card to another kid in the classroom. So it's just ways to change up what we already do. Creating unity. I am a huge proponent on acts of kindness, talking about life lessons, talking about social-emotional growth, bringing everybody together. These are just a few things that I do in the classroom. At the beginning of the school year, we do an activity with toothpaste where I get little containers of toothpaste, and I tell them, "You have to squeeze out all of the toothpaste as fast as you can, and I'm timing you." And they go nuts, and they think it's so fun. And then I say, "Okay, now put the toothpaste back in." So they have fun with that, too. And obviously, you can't put all the toothpaste back in, so it's kind of like mean words that you say. You can't always take them back once they're set. You can apologize and take a little bit back, but not all of them. So, and that's just a few other things that we do. We write messages on the blacktop at recess so people come out and see them. I had a diabetic in the classroom this year, and my sister's actually a diabetic, so she came in, and that's a picture of them, they have the same pump. So just supporting kids and their differences and what makes them special. And at the bottom, we are the electromagnetic spectrum for when we do colored light. And we have quotes. I think quotes and the words of other people are hugely important, so we share different quotes from readings throughout the year, and then we jump into music. I'm sure you're wondering what my little duck friend is about in the middle there? Well, that little duck was a little eraser that we found on the floor in the hallway, and the kids started naming him and putting them on different desks throughout the day. And I said, "Well, what's going on?" And they're like, "I think this is our class pet." So we named him, and then we took turns taking him home and taking pictures of his life. And then through that, kids made like houses for him and food, and it just like took on a life of its own. So I do a lot of stuff like that. Love Project was a project I did last year, and there's a video on my website to see it, is it was this thing that Ellen DeGeneres was doing, and who doesn't love to do what's stuff that she does? And it was, "What does love mean to you?" So all the kids wrote a word about what love means to them, and we made a YouTube video for it. So just finding different ways to do things like that. Extending our thinking. So this year was the first year that Perry Hill School participated in the Kid Governor. It is, and hopefully in the future, it's for fifth graders, and there's a fifth grader chosen in the state of Connecticut to become the kid governor for the year, so hopefully in the future, we will be seeking out that opportunity, see all the different math activities, just kind of building from there. That's Leah in the middle there. She, we did a project where we did doghouse ratios, big to small, and she went home and she built one with her dad based on the project we did in class. For March Madness, we do math madness, so that kind of intertwines there. And then Ms. Pick and I in the back there, we like to take things to the extreme level. So we took a group of thirty-five current, what are they, seventh, eighth, ninth graders to California last summer. So that was pretty cool, and we look to do, look for opportunities outside of the classroom. So here's a couple of my, what annoys me the most about my kids and how can I turn it into something that doesn't annoy me anymore? So why say no when you can say yes? Paper airplanes was a huge thing one year. We were building them twenty-four-seven after the lovely art origami lessons. And so then we turned it into an activity, and we measured distance, and we talked about how the air flows over the planes and everything like that. Water bottle flipping, I'm sure we can all, you know, have had that in our lives, so that was a huge thing last year. So I turned it into a which water bottle is going to flip the best? How much milliliters of water do you need in your water bottle to create the perfect flip? So we did that. And then obviously, the new fad this year is making slime. So we talked about the different things that make slime and what goes into making slime, and we read articles about the people who had chemical reactions to slime, so not all things are safe in science, you have to take precautions, and so forth. And problem solving. So I run the school newspaper, it's called The Panther Pride. I actually have an addition that's coming out next week to give to everybody so you can see. The kids weren't really hearted at it, but we only have a small period, and we do an eight-and-a-half by eleven front and back sheet of paper. And so what did we do? We created a website. Well, I did not create a website. Siddarth Jain created the website. And then three years later, when Google Slides came out, his sister Sinjana, who's back there, made the new one as well. So the kids love to do that. And it's just other things, like, what is the problem? How can we fix it? I have to attest the pencil holder to an idea that we had, and then I kind of put my dad, who's here to work, and he created it, so I never lose a pencil again. They all have a spot to go at the end of the day. So it's silly things like that, just finding ways to find your problems and fix them, but including the kids in them. Flexible seating, huge. I wish I had more of it. I wish I had more flexible seating things for the classroom and for the school building. And it's really important to give kids different opportunities and different ways to learn, because not everybody learns sitting at a desk, like, you know, and at a table. Technology, I'm huge on technology. I love it, I love everything about it, I love to learn about it. So here's just a few ways that we use technology in the classroom. We, the kids presenting Google Slides or Prezi Presentations, they make their own websites, they showcase all of their work in a Google Math portfolio online. We do different Google Forms for testing, so paperless, paperless, I'm all paperless for all my tests, so that's pretty cool. The Panther Pride site, and contacting parents, too. And we also use technology to teach each other, and that's what the kids use it the most for. They research and they present information to each other. So I love this and I love that picture. So one of the research projects we do in fifth grade is we research what it's like to live in colonial America, and, you know, social studies can be pretty heavy and boring at times, especially in those thick textbooks. So they do all the research themselves, they research where they want to live, who they want to be, what character they want to play, what their job is, where they have to go, and then they perform a reader's theater skit. So we were taking pictures at the end of last year, and the group that's shown there was like, "Mystician." Well, we researched, and, you know, one, they probably didn't have cameras back then, and if they did, you had to sit for like forty hours to get your picture taken. So we should have really bad faces, we shouldn't smile, because that's why people didn't smile. You couldn't smile when you had to sit there for a picture for like ever, for a person, so that's when we took that picture. Study skills, hugely important and something we use technology a lot for, and sometimes you don't use technology a lot. So we get creative in the ways that we study. We use Kahoot, we use Quizlet, flashcards. Some of the kids I know have big giant posters in their room, and they just continuously write information down. So to me, I don't necessarily see me as being innovative, I see the people around me making me innovative. From the colleagues that I talk to, from going into other classrooms and being like, "Oh, wow, that's great, I'm going to do that," from just talking with my family every day. And that's what I think makes me innovative. I also think it's my kids, who everyone knows that they're my students. So if you ever hear me refer to my kids, I have hundreds of them. And it's really them, and it's what's interesting to them becomes interesting to me, and how can I use that to help them want to learn? Okay, so hopefully I kept under my fifteen minutes. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, thank you so much, Mystician. Before we, before we, I'd like to ask her parents and grandmother to stand up so we can thank them, thank you, our whole family and everybody. And finally, I'd like to ask if Ms. Williams, who has been an influence on her, would step forward and say a closing word.
First, I just want to congratulate Courtney. Very proud that you represent Perry Hill School in Shelton and is her first winner of the year. Courtney really does all the stuff that she showcased in her PowerPoint. It's really important to Courtney that she reach every single kid, and as Chris said, when you walk in her room, you very rarely see her in front of the room teaching. You see kids all over the place, working at their level, at their interests, at their morality, and you see Courtney facilitating it. I could be there fifteen minutes, unfortunately, because she's running the whole class and nothing interrupts Courtney, she's working hard. She's becoming a leader in the district, she's old for ninety-two, so she's doing internship with me, so I've had the pleasure of really talking to her in depth every week. We talk philosophy, and we talk education. She's on our school improvement team, she does the newspaper, she's the teacher in our after-school program. Always willing to just kind of jump in, and we have a great staff at Perry Hill, she's one of the, as she said, one of the, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Before, before we move on, can I just, I would be totally remiss if we, if I let this go by without saying, first of all, I can't think of-
He was in there, did you see him?
I did see him. I said, "Hey, there's Jack." So I have a child who was lucky enough to have Mystician as a teacher, and we see her on evenings and weekends, at football games and lacrosse games, and I do take issue with one point in the presentation, which is that I, I don't think the innovation finds you. I think you bring it out of the kids. I've seen it, maybe you bring it out in each other, I don't know, but my, my child, to say that Courtney is one of his favorite teachers, it doesn't even cut it, she's one of his favorite humans that he's ever met. So I just wanted to add a personal note of congratulations, and he's, he's very well-served.
I think you can see, just based on the clip we've been seeing, you know, when people say, "Oh, teaching, what an easy job," they're wrong. And when people think that, "Oh, teachers have an easy job and they're overpaid," that's not true. So make sure when you have an opportunity to stand up and respond to those kinds of comments that you take back to this evening and say, "Not so." Okay, the presentation is over. Okay, at this point, we will allow a couple of moments in case anybody who was part of the presentations would like to get out of Dodge. Some people have homework.
FRC kids were studying to go build a robot.
Yeah, well, that's the thing, there are people who need to build robots, people who need to do homework. public up to five minutes, which they can use to address the board, and a reminder under our board policy, that's ninety-three twenty-five, while you have this opportunity, nobody should be defaming any Board of Education employees, students, or community members as part of their comments. Would anybody care to address the board? Okay, if you'd come forward, and please give your name and address so that it can appear on the record.
Sure. Good evening, my name is Mike D'Amico, Eleven Bristol Drive, Shelton, Connecticut, and I want to just say thank you for the amount of time you've given here. I know you've had a very busy week, so my comments are just kind of a continuation from the public hearing on Monday evening. I was trying to stay within your framework there and didn't get to speak about the facilities option, so I just want to make a couple of very brief comments. As Dr. Cluett mentioned the other evening, I'm part of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, and I run the apprenticeship, I used to run the apprenticeship program prior to moving on to the project that I have now, the job that I have now. And since this was the facilities-type meeting, I thought it would be good to just mention to you that the next time you have a large project, whether it be a school renovation, knock on wood, maybe we get to build a new school someday, whatever the case may be, you should really look into what we call a project labor agreement, which would allow local residents to work on that project first, and we make sure that those projects come in on time, under budget, not at, under budget, and coupled with our Code of Excellence program, I think it could be a good fit for the city for projects moving forward. That said, the next part of the facilities is a group of people who haven't really been talked about too much at these meetings. I wasn't able to come last night, but they are part of our facilities, they work hard, and I know you folks aren't involved with the negotiations or anything, but I do, I do not want the public to forget about our cafeteria workers that are there, because they are part of our school system as well. They are tasked with, you know, lifting heavy objects, working around hot temperatures. My grandmother was a cafeteria worker in Andrew Ward in Fairfield for well over twenty years, and I saw the hurt back, I saw the scars, I saw the burns, I saw the cuts, the scrapes, the bruises. It was mentioned several times Monday night that Shelton is a middle-class town, and I believe that. I've spent forty years of my, forty-eight years of my life here, growing up here, they're not making middle-class wages. I know it's, I know you folks don't negotiate that, I know, but that's between the union they belong to and the company that was brought in. They are charged with maintaining the health, you know, keeping a healthy kitchen, a clean kitchen, making sure our students are fed, you know, healthy food, keeping it at the proper temperatures and things of that nature. You know, a six-to-seven dollar an hour pay cut, no paid time off, not having an agreement for this being this far into the school year, I think it's unacceptable. I would just, anybody who has any kind of pull or has any kind of influence, I would just like you to speak your mind out in the public, let the company know that these, these workers do deserve a fair contract. They're there keeping our kids safe every day as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike. Would anybody else care to address the board? Would anybody else care to address the board? Okay, Judd?
Smiling, Mr. Chairman. Johnson Crawford, Eight Jordan Avenue. As of June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, the Board of Ed returned to the As of June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, the Board of Ed returned to the city one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and four dollars. As of June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, the Board of Ed returned to the city three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. As reported by Claremont and Associates LLC, Accountants and Advisors CPA. Yet, at the workshop number two, principals stated, they are running short on their supply accounts allocated to them by you, the Board of Education. My only question to you people is why was this money turned back into the city if it was needed by our teachers? Right now, I'm being instructed by my granddaughter about the new mathematical system that is being implemented into the schools. It's very different from the math system that was one and one is two, and two and two is four. I couldn't believe it. It's very important to be able to instruct our students into this system. Now to congratulate you. You will probably hear about this tonight, but Sunnyside School, I go by the school every single morning. And it is now standing out as a beautiful building, especially at night. The front is all red. The money has been well expended. I want to thank you very much for taking your time to listen to what I have to say.
Thank you. Would anybody else care to address the board? Would anybody else care to address the board? Would anybody else care to address the board? Sensing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is approval of the minutes which were attached. We have minutes for our special meetings of December sixth, December thirteenth, our regular meeting of December thirteenth, and our special meeting for Budget Workshop number one.
So move.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries the animus leap. Communications to the board, completely have any. Okay. All righty. Next item, Superintendent's Reports and Action Items.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to begin the report tonight with a report by our friend and colleague Valerie Knight DeGanji regarding the mentor program. Ms. Knight DeGanji, would you step forward to the microphone, please? I just want to say, you know, we mentioned earlier the notion of mentoring in the context of the robotics program, and that was quite correct, the comments that Ms. Piccolo made, that, that mentoring is very important. But you'll often hear and announce, become somewhat of a cliche, that it takes a village to raise a child, but it's just the truth. And we are lucky enough in this district to have a robust mentoring program where adults come in for an hour per week and work with an individual child during the school day, in the school, and it really makes a difference. And the research is clear, and we are very fortunate to have a very talented coordinator of those services, Ms. Valerie Knight DeGanji. We have recently made some changes, and she has been at the forefront of working on changing the policies, and she's going to explain some of that to the board members tonight. And I will say, and I suspect she might say as well, we think there should be more mentors, more people volunteering for that one hour a week, but I'll, I don't want to steal her thunder, so Val, thanks for being here tonight and thanks for all you do.
Thank you all very much for letting me join you tonight, Dr. Couette and Chairman Holden and all of the rest of the board members. I'm delighted to be here. The last time I was here, we were honoring one of our mentors, Tom Galak, who had received a special award from the Governor's Prevention Partnership for his outstanding mentoring efforts here in Shelton. Tom, as an employee of Pitney Bowes, represents really what the best there is to be here in Shelton mentoring, and, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about Pitney Bowes in just a minute. As Dr. Couette has said, a lot has been changing. The Shelton's Schools Mentoring Program is now twenty-two years old. We are the only school-based mentoring program in the valley. We're it. There are a couple of other smaller mentoring programs, one in Seymour and one in Ansonia, but they are at grade level in individuals, in an individual school, they are not district-wide. We are very, very fortunate to have a district-wide program here that was actually modeled after the City of Norwalk's mentoring program, which was established by Dr. Susan Weinberger many, many years ago. Dr. Weinberger has graciously agreed to join us to bring the mentoring program into the next phase, into the next twenty-two years. And to that end, she has been working with us diligently since October to ensure that our policies and procedures are being followed. One of the largest ones, and something that I have very special thanks for both the Human Resources Department here as well as security, is to let you all know that the fifty-seven mentors that are in our program have all been fingerprinted, have all been, all gone through all of their background checks or DSS, and we are delighted to tell you that Pitney Bowes stepped up to the plate and gave us grant money in order for us to be able to do that. There is grant funding still available through July because of how we received that, that funding, and we're very, very fortunate that we will be able to continue to process these individuals. As Chris has said, we certainly want to have more in our program to be able to be working with the children. One of the things I can also tell you is that we are working, as I said, to upgrade the policies and procedures for this program. One of them is to have a mentoring advisory council. The lovely lady to my left, Ms. Penozzo, is one of the members of the advisory council. There are a really great group of folks, both from the Shelton Public Schools as well as the greater Shelton area, comprised of folks that have an interest in making sure that mentoring will succeed. That advisory council is scheduled to meet in two weeks. We are going to be having our first meeting in the beginning of February to discuss how we can move forward. The advisory council is also going to be reviewing the policies and procedures. Both Lorraine Rosner and Dr. Couette have been working with me initially to look at those procedures. We have made some comments back and forth, and we will bring them to the advisory council for their input so that we can have one solid plan in place. Another thing that we're going to be rolling out is to have a new mentor training. The mentor training is being developed again by Dr. Weinberger that will be able to meet all of the best practices for mentoring, not only here in the state, but also throughout the country. We will be rolling that out in March, and we will also be meeting with all of the guidance staff, all of the school liaisons, and everybody associated with the mentoring program so that people are aware of what we are doing and how we are going to be looking at this program in the future. One of them, one of the procedures, another one of the procedures that we're talking about doing, is to be able to get input and evaluation from the teachers, from the people that are working with the students, so that we can continue to refine and make the program even better. And I am also pleased to report that happy National Mentoring Month. We are going to be having a very special event next Wednesday that you are all certainly invited to come to, and it gets to Chris's point about adding new folks into the program. Lorraine Williams and the staff at Perry Hill School have graciously opened their doors to us in their cafeterium, and they will be allowing us to have a thank you mentor pizza party, where I have encouraged mentors, existing mentors, who are really the very best ambassadors that we have of this program, to come and bring a friend, someone that they think might be a good mentor candidate to learn more about mentoring. So again, it's a wonderful opportunity for any of you on the board that want to be able to join us. At this time, I'm also going to be passing around a brochure that we have been working on diligently. I have been, here we go, sorry, I apologize. I have been working with one of our board, one of our board members, I guess that's the best way to say. Ann Gatos gives a special kudos and call out to all of the volunteer effort she has put into this particular brochure. Our brochure was really in the dark ages, that's all I can say. I didn't even bring it because it was so bad. And I can share with you that Ann took the ideas that I shared with her and just made them come to life, come to life, and she's so creative with all of this. Even though she did not dedicate her time or donate her time at this point to becoming a mentor, she felt so strongly about this program that she volunteered to work on it with me to see this wonderful brochure come to life in front of you. So it's a, as you can see, it's a stapled version, we need to get it printed, we need to do a few more things with it, and I'm so grateful to, for all that you have done, because really, this is the kind of level of recruitment effort, as well as, you know, reaching out to folks and being able to share with them what the mentoring program is all about, and, and to be able to get quality people into this program. Before I came here tonight, I was, I received an email from one of our mentors, and I'd like to just take the opportunity to, to share it with you. The reason why I'm sharing this with you is I think it's a wonderful example of exactly how this program works. Let me just give you just a quick background about it. The mentor who you're going to hear from in the email had a previous mentee for the last several years. He had worked with him through intermediate school and then high school, and it just wasn't working anymore, and they parted ways. They just, both of them, it was an amicable time, but they both decided that there was no reason to continue, that the young man was in a good place and he was, he was doing fine. The mentee that you will hear about had been with his mentor for a number of years at elementary school and then Perry Hill, and then the intermediate school, and his mentor retired this year. So it's kind of serendipitous that these folks have come together, and this is what, what I have to share with you. This was actually to me and Tracy Gigolotti, who's the guidance counselor at the intermediate school, who is also on the member of, who's becoming a member of the Mentor Advisory Council and who's liaison there. Hi Tracy, just a quick note to let you know how encouraged I am after two sessions with Tyler. The timing could not have been better, as he's a Philadelphia Eagles fan and I am a Minnesota Vikings fan. It served, hang on just a second, it served as an excellent opportunity to establish our relationship. When I saw him today, the first thing he said to me was, my Eagles beat your Vikings. He had such a genuine smile on his face. I was also able to open doors surrounding his recent birthday and the fact he just turned thirteen. He seemed to really enjoy talking about it. I think this is going to work out very well. He's been very attentive, willing to interact verbally, and is very polite. Thanks for the heads up concerning yes or no questions. I learned quickly that open-ended ones lead to much more interactive conversations. I will continue to meet with him during his lunch period on Wednesdays moving forward. Best, Tom. I think it says it all, because this program is all about helping children understand that there are caring adults out there in the community that really want them to succeed. It is all about being able to have somebody in your court, have somebody that's willing to advocate for you, to speak up for you, and to really be there and listen to you. It's, it's one of the best parts of, about my job, interacting with all of these people, and I can't say enough about how grateful I am to you on the Board of Ed for continuing to support this program. And I'd like to end with our tagline, which has been something that we've been, been advocating for the last twenty-two years, and my last seventeen of those twenty-two years. For just an hour each week, you can make a difference that can last a lifetime. Thank you very much for your time. Questions, anyone?
I just want to make a comment. I have a friend whose husband passed when her son was two weeks old. She was a late-in-life married. He got a mentor. They were mentee-mentor, this was in Stratford, through elementary school, middle school, high school, and the mentor was even at his wedding. So it is a lifelong.
It is absolutely lifelong. Thank you.
And I certainly enjoy being part of the program, and I am honored to be a part of it, and I always learn something new from the child that I mentor, and, and we invent cool games, like checker, Jenga, off-the-ceiling stuff and everything, but it's, it's really, and, and we set goals and things like that so that he can learn about goal-setting for his life and that sort of thing. So it's a very good program, and again, I thank you for your tireless efforts over many years to make this what it is.
Thank you all. Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to give a, a brief update on the strategic planning work. We are working, by the way, you may have noticed, many of you, that there was a very in-depth article in the Connecticut Post written by Linda Lambet, who happens to be here tonight, so I don't want to, but about library learning commons, and a lot of that overlapped with the work we're doing with our strategic planning, including coding. That is becoming a rooted part of what we do as a district, a lot more to come, but we're going to, what we've been working on most recently is establishing a Shelton Vision of Graduate. And a Shelton Vision of Graduate is what, what is it going to look like? What do we see, what will we see and expect from our graduates? That's something that everyone in the community has a role in. Obviously, the high school plays a prominent role, but everyone has a role in it. Everybody on the board and everybody in every position in the school district has a role. We are working on that, and I'd like to bring that, an exercise slash activity to the board. Perhaps we can try it next month, where we can take a fifteen-minute part of our meeting and actually do that together, and, and it's, it's interesting, and I think you'll find it engaging. But the Strategic Planning Committee's working on it, we're working on it with some other groups to establish what will eventually, will be a point of reference for us to work backwards from, to establish more focused goals and, and a clear pathway for our students. So we're very excited about this Shelton Vision of Graduate. Also, we're working on developing a public event regarding the work of strategic planning for, by definition, the public, and sometime in the late spring, we don't have a date set precisely, but we want to mix the arts, the technology, the creativity of our students so they can be on display for members of the community to see. Those are all parts of what we're working on with our strategic planning efforts. At this point, we have a very interesting presentation. I'd like to ask John Calhoun, our Director of Facilities, to step to the microphone. Now, sometimes I have heard people say, not in this room, but I've heard people in other rooms in town say, they don't really like to necessarily see pictures of what our facilities look like when things aren't going well. Well, sometimes I think it is important. Well, sometimes I think it is important to see pictures. So tonight, I've asked John to put together with the help of principals from throughout the district, some pictures that show us where some of the things that are going well are and we should take pride in the fact that we are accomplishing a lot of things. And we should also be aware of areas where there are, where there's real need for improvement. So John is, has presented, has put together a presentation tonight which will show us in some graphic detail, the good, the bad and the ugly.
Okay, thank you very much. Hopefully it won't be too graphic, but. So this is an overview of some of the things that we have forecasted for our facilities' needs. Start out with the five elementary schools. First of all, one of the needs that I think you all are quite well aware of, we've talked about it many times, is the shades in our elementary schools. They offer no light blocking or thermal properties. So what we'd like to do is we'd like to start on a, on a process over, over several years, start replacing.
John, you might want to use the microphone to speak a little bit in the tape so we want to hear what you say.
Okay. Can, can everyone hear me? Oh.
Thanks, Brett.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. So again, we would like to start on a program that's going to encompass a few years, but ideally, we would, we would do the proposal, we would do roller shades that have thermal property, that'd be room darkening, which would be a benefit for our security, for our energy and also for our instructional needs. Another thing is, if you've been in the elementaries in the early fall or late spring, you realize that the air in the buildings is quite stale and quite warm at times. So another proposal we'd like to present, again, this would be done in sections, would be to install two ceiling-mounted fans in each of the classrooms. Now, I know it's a little, little hard to see, but if you look over in the corner there, there's a little ceiling, there's a little wall fan over there. It absolutely does pretty much nothing. So again, so this is something that the district really needs and it's going to be helpful to move some air around and provide some comfort for our students. And again, that'll also have an impact on instruction. One of the things that is currently a pet peeve of mine is the amount of wasted paper that we have in the, in the bathrooms and as far as paper towels and dispensers and stuff like that. So what I'd be looking at, it would be to replace, in the elementary school, paper towel dispensers in the restroom, replace them with energy-efficient and sanitary hand dryers that, that would be used to, again, to save paper, save, save the district money in supplies with very little impact on our electric bill. If any of you folks have been to Sunnyside, you see the lighting project we did in the building and the gym. And this is a, this is a stock photo, but this is kind of gives you an idea of what our gyms look like currently with the lighting and what they can look like with LED retrofits. So again, this would be something that we would work with the utilities to fund and it really wouldn't be any out-of-pocket cost. It would, it would be financed on bill and the savings always eclipses the, the cost of the projects. This is a little, some of our tours with my maintenance staff and myself going through the boiler rooms and the mechanical rooms at these schools. We've got a lot of mechanical components that are in various states of disrepair and we need to get on a preventative maintenance program to replace these things before they fail because when they fail, it causes power outages, heat loss, water and sewage issues. And again, it all has, it all has an effect on our students in the instructional day. This is an old photo I found, I dug up out of, out of the internet of the Elizabeth Shelton School. When this photo was taken, those windows were probably new. Right, so luckily, we are in the process right now of getting ready to go out to bid for windows for there and that will be a thing of the past. But again, we, we need to go further with this and we need to address the windows at Booth Hill, Long Hill, Mohegan, Sunnyside. So we want to keep going with programs like that as well and that's a city-funded project. This is one that's quite a, quite an issue to anyone who's at Long Hill or has been at Long Hill, the playground in the back. It is, it is, to say the least, beyond its useful life and it cannot be, cannot be capped or overlaid anymore. It needs to be reclaimed and repaved. Again, we'd have to work with the city on this to replace the asphalt, curb it and reline This is in Sunnyside Elementary. These are, this is the picture on the left, is our cafeteria floor, which is in very poor condition and it's a vinyl, it's a vinyl floor. And then on the, on the right is in the cafeteria wall and it also, it borders up to the, to the gym. Those are the dividers and you can see they're, they're very old, outdated, worn out and they also are an injury, potential injury situation because people have gotten their fingers caught in there when they're doing, because they're all manual. So we'd be looking at replacing the floors with, doing it our staff with, with materials and then looking at a replacement for the divider wall and hopefully, ideally, mechanical. Again, Sunnyside, we did so much work there in the library, but the one thing we did not have the money to finish was the, was the windows in there. The seals have failed and they're no longer energy efficient or functional and most of them are cloudy. If you look at the big set of windows in there, the librarian has artfully covered them with sticky notes to cover the, to cover the look. So again, we'd like to replace those with high-efficiency, low E double-pane windows. Again, one more at Sunnyside while we're there. Stage elevator has been broken and it's, there's no current access for handicapped individuals. We will remove that and we'd replace it with an ADA compliant stair lift. Next, we go to the upper elementary, intermediate, high school and the central office. At Perry Hill School, have a problem due to salt and deterioration is the nosing treads on the, on the exterior stairs. Proposal would be to do this, Board of Ed funded, remove the old nosings on there, resurface the concrete and install new nosings for, for traction and safety. Some of them are taped off at times because of they're just, they've deteriorated and again, it's a very, it's a very tedious process to repair those, but they really need to be done. This is a couple more issues inside Perry Hill. The courtyard has some concrete steps that the city has agreed to repair. We just need to get them in there to take care of that. So that's one of the things we're proposing. And then they've, they've had a tremendous problem with their cafeteria tables. You can see they're just, just very poor. So we, we need to work on the warranty issues with those tables to get those replaced. This, again, this would be some mechanicals in intermediate school and the high school. You'll see some outdated HVAC equipment on the right there and then you'll see some pumps and some valves, gate valves for the, in, in the mechanical rooms that need to be replaced. And again, we want to do it on a preventative maintenance thing. So we are replacing these, these pumps and these devices on a, on a regular basis before, before they, before they fail and cause us, cause us problems in the buildings. This is at intermediate school. These, if you've been on some of the stairs there, they are absolutely starting to fall apart. The treads are all worn bare. On the left there, the current ones, the nosings are starting to break off, they become a trip hazard. You can see there's tape on there to, to warn the students to watch their step on there and that's, that's something we cannot have. The proposal is to tear off the, tear off all the existing material and replace it with new, new material that's better quality, that'll be longer lasting for the district. Recently, we had a failure of our hot water heater at Perry Hill and we, we took some innovations to save some money to replace it with, with these tankless hot water heaters. So intermediate school, you can see their hot water heater is just about at the end of its life and it needs to be replaced. So again, without spending a ton of money, but doing it in-house with the, with the purchase of these tankless water heaters that are, that are chained together would be a huge energy saver for the district and also it needs to replace a failing piece of equipment. This is at the intermediate school as well. They're having, their cafeteria tables are aged and starting to break and need, needs many repairs and the student desks, student chairs, I mean, they, they break on a regular basis as well. So we, we'd like to put that on some sort of a schedule so we could start replacing the, that furniture in there because again, we just do not want the liability of having students injured if any of these, any of these, you know, older pieces of equipment fail. This is in the high school, this is, we have an emergency lighting system in there and they, they use a battery, a battery-powered system. When they, when they did the renovation, they, they put in, they put in a battery system and they, each one uses around 30 batteries. So those are at, those are actually six years over their useful life and they will no longer be able to perform and give us the, the amount of time to keep our emergency lights functioning. So we need to put in, we need to put in new batteries that are going to last us probably 10 to 12 years on, on two of the systems. So that's about 60 batteries. So it's, it's quite a, quite an expense. But again, it is our emergency lighting system and that is our backup protection should, should power go down. John, is that a life safety code violation? It would be a code violation if they weren't functional. They are functional, but again, the battery life is, is not, is, is efficient as it should be. So we need to, we need to get back to the, you know, we need to get new batteries in, into the systems. This is a request from the high school. These are, the, we have the banned closets that were in the hallway there along with, and they had to be removed back when we had fire code violations because there was no sprinkler system. Well, now we do have our sprinkler system, obviously. We, we, we would like to put built-in closets in there to house all of our banned equipment and to make it neat and, and safe for our students. And the other one is the, is the Gale Good Student Store. We would like to install a service through a window in there so that they could, the students could sell things through the windows. And again, that's something we could do in-house, we just need materials and things to, to attempt that project. This is the high school parking lot. Everything I said about Long Hill is true here as well. And this is, we, we've had multiple issues with people tripping and falling in our parking lot and we cannot, we cannot have, you know, this continue. We need to, we really need to have this replaced. This is an area, I'm not sure if you folks have noticed, but if you're, you're driving there at night, you'll notice there's a lot of these lights that are out. They're not out due to bulb failure or anything, a lack of maintenance. They are, have actually failed in the ground, they are breaks in the ground. So what we need to do is we need to work with the city to have the lines dug up and we need to rerun power to all these poles so that we can get everything back up to code and, and make that, make that drive safe. This, of course, you're well aware of this, this is our stadium and tennis courts and athletic fields. We are on, on track to replace the turf and the track there, but we need to continue in the process within future budgets. We need to, we need to, without a doubt, someone had mentioned the other night about the tennis courts. They need to be addressed. The bleachers need to be addressed. The, the athletic field configurations, that needs to be addressed at some time. We have, anyone who's been to any of the athletic events, you're, you're dodging fall balls all the time. So that's something that we, we really need to address when we're looking at an overall field configuration. This is in this building here. We need to have the frame reinforced in here due to, we had water leaks over, over the years and it's been damaged. So we need to get in there and, and remove the deteriorated framework and replace with new, new steel reinforced system. This is the mechanicals in the Board of Ed offices. Again, kind of what I talked about with preventative maintenance program, funding to replace pumps, replace valves. And, and again, these are just things that should be done as a matter of course, but of course, you have to have the funding, be able to afford the components to be able for our staff to do the repairs. And again, when you talk about windows, if we're on a window kick with the rest of the school district, the second floor of this building was never completed and these windows are very drafty and can ask anyone who works up here on the second floor, it's kind of a little cool at times. So those are.
He sits on that side of this room for a meeting.
There, there's, there's my point, yeah. This is out back, I don't know if anyone's seen this, but there's a, there's a, there's a ramp out back and to say the least, it is, it is not very friendly and could be, it's extremely hazardous. And what I'd like to do is with that is just work with the city and have them, have them cap it with asphalt and, and, and make it functional again. It's a small project, but it's something we can work with the city on.
Isn't that where we snuck in last year when we had immediate bombardment out front?
Probably did, yeah. And again, this is for the district needs. We have a lot of our custodial equipment is in disrepair and we've had, we've had many, many repairs this year and we're spending all kinds of money to fix these old, old pieces of equipment. And as a result, you know, we get a lot of salt put out into, into the, into the parking lots and into the, the entryways. It gets tracked in the building. You really need these machines to keep our, keep our hallways clean. So again, we are, like you said, we're, we're, we're spending money that really should be spent on, on purchasing new equipment. And also the same thing with our vans. This is just a stock photo of a van. We replaced a vehicle last year. We, we bought a pickup truck with a plow on it, which has helped us to remove snow when the city is not available. We had a, we had a sander put on it so we can, we can kind of respond to emergencies. This one would be a mechanic's van that they would use and they would house their equipment in there to, to do the repairs in the district. And again, the vans are, you know, pushing 150, 160,000 miles, they're in the shops constantly and again, we're just spending a lot of money on repairs I really think would be better spent elsewhere. Questions?
How much of this needs to be done next year besides all of it?
Needs to be done this next year? Well, again, it's, it's a matter of prioritizing what, which ones are the highest need. Obviously, the life safety things are very important. Any of the safety, safety, anything that's, that really has to do with safety and whether it be the asphalt in our parking lots, the life safety equipment we talked about. Things like, you know, obviously, we're going to be doing the windows over the summer at Elizabeth Shelton. We'd like to obviously get the next building in the, in the, in the queue for the following year. Again, the other things, some of the things we can, we can do relatively easily as far as the lighting, the lighting initiatives to save money. And again, when we start to save that money, we'll be able to put that back into our budget to use it for other, other things. But again, another thing that's been a, I've heard a really big need for and if you walk around the buildings, the, the elementary teachers are really struggling with the classroom issues as far as the shades go. They're not, some of them aren't able to teach in the morning because the sunshine is too bright. Even with the shades, they can't, they can't access their Promethean boards because the light is shining on there. And, and again, the, the heat tends to be, heat tends to be an issue as well. And again, the fans would be a priority as well. So again, I, it's how much we're.
All of it next week.
Pretty much, pretty much. I mean, I don't want to have too much to do this summer, but I, you know, again, whatever, whatever we, you, you folks feel that the budget can support would be greatly put to use and to, to do a lot of these things.
I have a question. Aside from the Board of Ed funding, could you seek more city funding seeing that the facilities are in such bad repair?
Well, we, we would on a, on a lot of the bigger projects, we certainly would do that, yeah. Anything that would be larger dollar type things, we would go to the city for the funding on that. And again, that would be up to the alderman and the mayor to approve ultimately.
Yeah, because I think the city residents have to put more pressure on the aldermen, you know, just speaking out at these public forums. They all want the schools in better shape, better supplies. So I think the citizens need to put more pressure on the mayor and the alder. Thank you.
You're welcome.
John, could you speak just briefly about the, the value of preventative making? Can we shut that down?
Yeah, just close that. Yeah, just close that.
You don't like that? The, the role of, you know, as you know, called PM, right, preventative maintenance, it seems that there's a need for a mind shift in the city in terms of the funding stream to support this. You end up saving money. If you do, I ask if you would agree with this, the effective preventative maintenance strategy actually costs citizens less money over time and increases value for the students and staff in the buildings?
Without a doubt. I mean, it's been, there's, there's numerous studies and, and, and various documentation that proves that. It, it really is gonna, I mean, you look at, like I said, you look at some of our equipment and, and what, what is the cost of that ultimately? You're going to, you're gonna pay the cost one, at one time or another and usually it's gonna be like five degrees outside when they fail. You're, you're gonna either, the cost is gonna be missing, missing school or it's gonna be uncomfortable students, unhappy staff and, and it's, but again, you're, you're gonna, you're gonna pay the money sooner or later, but the point is, is if you do the preventative maintenance, you're gonna capture a lot of these things. You're gonna, you're gonna solve a lot of these larger problems because a lot of times they lead into other issues such as frozen pipes and broke, and, and things that, that cost the district even more money. And with the lighting, with the lighting initiatives and some of the energy initiatives that replace motors and pumps and those things there are gonna be things that are, that are basically gonna be partially funded by the utilities and they're gonna help you to, to offset that, but you're also gonna see that and in energy savings and also in a future maintenance thing. We like the LED fixtures that we put in at Sunnyside. What we're being told is with the life of those, we don't need to replace, probably won't need to replace the bulb there for ten to twelve years. And that means ballast as well, so we're not gonna spend the money on ballast, we're not gonna spend on bulb. We can use that money once, once that initiative is paid for to, to fund other things and other parts of the PM program. And again, with Sunnyside, it was such a no-brainer as a project to do that it's actually paying for itself through the energy savings in about, about twenty months. So, and after that, then the savings is all ours.
Yeah. And how many square feet are we as a district responsible for in terms of just the buildings?
Just the buildings?
Approximately?
We're, I, I gave you a, a handout on, on that as far as the building, the building If you look at the total square footage...
It's about a million, right?
Yeah, I'd say it's pretty close, it's pretty close to there, yeah. And so, again, that's, that's a pretty good size, that's a pretty good sized facility to, and again, we talk about roof leaks and things like that, well, seems like we're constantly chasing a roof leak and one, but when you have the amount of sizes of roofs and different age of roofs that we have, there's, we're constantly chasing down roof leaks and, and with the new, with the roofing programs, we're, we're eliminating that and, but again, so with that square footage comes, there's a lot of assets in our building that are mechanical and they need to be taken care of as well as, as well as computers and technology and everything else.
Well, we thank you for your fine work. We know that there's a lot to be done, but you've accomplished a lot since you've been here and we're very appreciative. Any other questions? All right, John, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. I'll just make the observation that preventative maintenance, you can save about a hundred and fifty dollars a year if you never change the oil on your car. But after a couple of years, you have a little problem. Okay, approved field trips, that's for information only. Board action items, consideration of the board to approve the request of Shelton Intermediate School of Innovation to conduct fundraising activities during the 2017-18 school year.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of the board to approve the request of Shelton High School boys' basket per, baseball team to conduct fundraising activities including the use of GoFundMe during the 2018 school baseball season.
Some move?
Okay, motion is made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of the board to accept on behalf of the Shelton High School robotics team a donation of twenty-five-hundred dollars worth of lumber from James Blakeman for the use of building a practice field.
Some move?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded, is there any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Before we go on to the next one, just a couple of quick comments. Last year's budget was an unusual case. There was a lot of uncertainty, nobody felt comfortable predicting what would happen with state or federal funding. We ended up with a very tight budget and making it work meant strapping ourselves in many respects. We reduced our teaching staff by eleven teachers. We reduced our central office administration staff and other staff throughout the district. We cut our school supplies by an amount that has our schools doing without things that they need on a day-to-day basis. We changed our school lunch provider to one who could reduce our costs by enough to preserve about three teaching jobs. The effects have been painful for many people, but there is no getting away from the fact that our mayor and our alderman did accept a risk by giving us certainty, even if it was less than we needed to maintain our services. The budget we're about to be voting on tonight isn't perfect, but it will allow us to get class sizes back to an acceptable level and ensure classes that must run will be staffed. It addresses the goal of many board members to continue working to bring our music program back to the level that it used to have. It restores some much-needed classroom supplies. It includes a gradual start to one-to-one computers, a concept that forty percent of districts across the nation have already accomplished. The last two budget seasons have been friendly and they've been cordial. And I hope everyone on this board will support the budget proposal. And I hope we'll all work together to be friendly and respectful while helping the mayor, the board of apportionment and taxation, and the board of aldermen understand that this budget is a good investment in Shelton's future. With that, consideration of the board to approve the superintendent's recommended 2018-19 budget request of seventy-four million, three-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand, four-hundred-and-seven dollars as presented. Is there a...
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Okay, motion is made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Follow up a little bit what you said, Mark. I think this budget is a little bit different than budgets that we've presented in the past that I've been involved in because it focuses on the ultimate goal of moving the Shelton School District into the top twenty-five percent of school districts in the state of Connecticut. To do this, we're continuing to expand the intermediate school of innovation. We've already seen some positive results with that and it's certainly worth growing. It allows us to grow the use of the STEM lab that was built with the aid of the mayor and the city alderman by adding faculty that will allow us to fully use the lab. As Mark mentioned, it addresses overcrowding in two of our elementary schools. So, I'm merging my colleagues, which I think they all support this, to support the budget. As we move through the budget process, I hope the rest of the citizens of Shelton will look at it and understand that it's a goal-oriented budget, not a status quo budget, but one that moves us forward into becoming one of the top twenty-five percent districts in the state of Connecticut, which is where we should be. Thank you.
Anybody else have a comment? Sensing we are ready to vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Comments by the board chair? I'm glad we passed the budget.
That's a small step for mankind.
Yeah. The last week or so has been an amazing week for our district. We had the eighth grade open house at the high school and anybody who wasn't impressed that attended that event simply does not have a pulse. It was an amazing presentation. Dr. Smith, you and your team, I don't know how you could've made it any better, okay? So, I greatly appreciate that. We had our visit to the School of Innovation and that was incredibly impressive. There we saw teachers who were blazing new trails and their having to reinvent how to run their classes, yet all of the students are absolutely engaged. And we found out that, one evidence, or example of how it is working, is that their absentee rate is twenty-five percent lower than for the rest of the school, which is incredible. These kids are engaged. Kathy Olish isn't here tonight, but one of the observations she had was that we couldn't tell who the special ed students were because everybody was working to their abilities. And I think that, while the School of Innovation may not be the best solution for every student, it certainly is the best solution for many students and I'm glad that we're starting to offer that option in the district. We had our public forum the other night and I thought that went very well, we had some good input. And I particularly appreciate the administrators who took time to come out and, you know, make their case for the problems that they've been dealing with because we did need to get out there that, you know, we were happy to try to make a go of it last year, but it turned out not to work as well as we'd hoped. Otherwise, on robotics, it was great that we had the FLL team here tonight. Something that'll be happening soon and I hope they'll be established by the time of our next regular meeting is that the FRC team is going to be building a practice field inside of the old gym at the front of this building. The lumber that we voted to accept is part of that project. And this year, our FRC team is going to have the advantage of being able to actually practice on a field, so when they go to the competitions, they're not having to learn everything all at once. And I think that'll be a huge help for us. Okay, reports of standing committees. Teaching and learning.
Mr. Chairman, Teaching and Learning Committee met on January tenth at four o'clock and our agenda items included the presentation calendar for February through June of 2018 for Teaching and Learning. The draft academic school calendar was shared and we reviewed the new course proposal protocol for February presentations. The superintendent made the comment to move next month's Teaching and Learning meeting to, in order to accommodate several committee members' absences due to an out-of-state conference, so our next month's meeting will be Monday, February twelfth, 2018 at four p.m. in room three-seventeen B at Shelton High School. And this is a different venue to accommodate Shelton High School presentations and tour. Tentative agenda items include class of twenty-two graduation requirements, new course proposals for approval, University of Brisbane dual course enrollment, additional Wizatonic Community College CCP dual course enrollment courses, college board, college-level examination program and Connecticut sealed by literacy, Shelton High School diploma distinction and of course, the building tour. That's it.
And I'll just piggyback, any board member, whether you're on that committee or not, if you're available for that meeting in February, if you're attending. Okay, finance committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The finance committee, we met on Monday, Janu...
All week.
All week.
That's right.
It seems truly like it.
Met on January twenty-second at five p.m. at Shelton Intermediate School and the purpose of being there was also to meet with the PTO Alliance as well as the open forum for our budget. During our meeting, there were three items of importance that were discussed at length. Verification for the check registers by reviewing if possible the purchase orders or some other procedure. Establishing, while Tina Henkel provided the committee members with information about the idea of a debit or gift credit card, and this is for purchasing certain supplies that teachers buy from stores such as the Dollar Store, Oriental Trading, Teacher Store, et cetera, that do not accept purchase orders. So, with that in mind, there's more discussion to go forward with that, but that was a rather innovative idea. Committee members were also provided a handout illustrating the transportation bids from four bus companies for the 2018-2019 school year. There will be ongoing discussion before BOE members select the company. Respectfully submitted, sir.
Okay. Policy committee.
We also met on January the tenth, following Teaching and Learning, we met at five. We had basically two general discussions. The first was an initial discussion, setting the groundwork for a new policy with regards board member use of social media and we did vote to proceed with such a policy. We had quite a castle of paperwork, which we divvied up work assignments for reading, reporting, and making recommendations at subsequent meetings. So, that's being carried forward to both the February and March agendas. We also had an initial discussion with regards to awareness of the discipline policy, state and local protocols for expulsion, and that is going to be covered in more detail at our retreat, once that is set, once the date is set. And we will also meet on the twelfth at five o'clock in the same room.
Yeah, three-seventeen B.
Okay.
Advice.
Okay. And report on CES.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The CES, we met on January twenty-fourth. The CES council met at three o'clock, I'm sorry, the CES council met on January eleventh at three o'clock. We had an abbreviated meeting at which time the board member, new board members were introduced. And then we heard information about the State Board of Education budget and the impact on member districts from the deputy director and general counsel for Abe, for Cabe, Patrice McCarthy. Following the presentation by Ms. McCarthy, consultants Jim Ritchie and Tom Jacobatis provided members with handouts and updates for the executive director research. Other than that, the two points that, or one point that I would like to emphasize is the fact that the State Board of Education cut the funding for CES with respect to magnet schools. As a result, the impact will have that CES is going to have to raise the tuition for member districts for students attending any of their magnet schools. So, that will also have an impact on our budget. Other than that, that's all I think would be of essence to report.
Okay. All right. At this time, I'm also gonna announce, last month, I said that we would have at least one more committee and there will be an additional committee for this year, which is going to be public relations and outreach. The current members of that committee are Mandy Kill Martin, who will be chairing, and Yan Gatos, who will be vice-chairing. Okay. Unfinished business.
Congratulations.
Oh, and by the way, they were the ones who worked on the flyers for promoting the speech or the, well, no, not that, the event that we had on Monday.
The forum, yeah.
The forum. So, okay. Unfinished business, we have none, new business, I'm not aware of any? Oh, well, actually, we do have the calendar. I don't see that on our agenda, so are we just going to review it tonight and discuss it? Okay.
Everyone has a copy?
Yep.
No.
Okay, so that'll be under new business and, okay, we all have a copy here and...
It's a quick review. It's our academic calendar. It's one of the most favorite things that I get to do. One thing that needs to be made very clear is that this calendar is aligned to the school districts in which we share students in day school. So, that means Bridgeport Aquaculture, RCA, CES, and ECA. So, our vacation times align with those. So, there's never an issue with our kids being out of school when they really should be in school. be in school. The vacation pattern is virtually the same. The one change that was strongly suggested by elementary administrators has to do with the parent-teacher conferences in March of nineteen. And you'll notice, if you look at the March calendar, all of the parent-teacher conference night, whether they're grades five-twelve or K-four, all fall on a Thursday evening with a Friday, a half-day Friday, for either compensating time off, early dismissal for kids on all four Fridays, or professional learning for our staff. One of the biggest issues that we have during early release days, especially with our K-four student population, is parents being unfamiliar with the Tuesday parent-teacher conference and Wednesday, a half-day early release. They tend to float in the calendar. We have a lot of buses coming back to schools with kids who won't be dropped off at home because there's no one there for them, because they forgot, or they weren't sure, or grandma didn't remember to stay at the bus stop, because this was, it's an unusual occurrence. It's hoped that that problem will be wiped out if we have a consistent calendar in March with Thursday, parent-teacher conferences, and half-days on Friday for kids. It's a pattern they could easily fall into, and hopefully will stop the problem of having our kids brought back to school.
A question.
Mm-hmm.
I see that we have, on the seventh and fourteenth, the conferences for five through twelve. Does it make sense to flip-flop them with the K-through-four students, so that the K-through-four parents get a heads-up that, hey, this is the month where we're doing early dismissal on Fridays?
Well, the, all the, the kids are all out on Friday afternoon, K-twelve.
Okay.
It's, it's really just, it's the parent-teacher conference nights on those Thursdays that are designated for either K-twelve parents or K-four.
Yeah, no, I was just thinking, if we did the younger students first, at least the parents on the first Thursday would get a warning that, hey, this starts tomorrow.
Yeah, I understand.
But we're probably going to need to send out notices, Ed.
Wait, we do.
The other discussion that came up, the Teaching and Learning, was concern for teachers who are taking coursework, missing two consecutive Thursdays of class.
Yeah.
Would it be feasible to go elementary one week and then the other segment of conferences? So, elementary's like the seventh and twenty-first, and five-twelve is the fourteenth, and would it be...
The way the conferences are aligned has to do with either the trimester ending or beginning, or the quarterly ending and beginning. So, that's where the rub is. There's lots of things to consider in this calendar.
Drawing it out, because I know what it is.
I go to the hairdresser quite a bit when I figure this one out. But, yes, considered, but unfortunately, it just doesn't align.
The teachers should not take a Thursday course, and that's...
Well, it's hoped that if the calendars is, you know, presented and published early enough, that folks will understand that in their coursework.
And if... Some professors are understanding.
Some are.
Some are.
Absolutely.
All righty. Does anybody have any other questions, relative to the calendar? Well, we will be looking at it again next month.
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have for your information, which is vacancy report, staff and stipend action, and the enrollment report. And now, we'll go to my second favorite part of the evening, highlights. Does anybody have anything for highlights?
I do.
Okay.
Even though you've covered, like, most of the things that went on.
Oh, well, sorry.
Many of which we were all at. Obviously, the SIS concert was a couple weeks ago, and I believe there were five of us in attendance, and that was phenomenal. And the observation was made in the lobby that every one of the kids on that stage that night in the band could be marching with the high school band next year. And, and that's something I have shared, my hope that we will have intermediate school students, eighth graders, present in the high school band next year, which hasn't been happening the last couple of years. And on the music trend here, I don't even know if Ms. Keller's here.
She is.
Maybe she can correct me on one fact I'm not sure of. We had a high school student who was a sophomore, who has made Western Regional Concert Band, and she is first chair with an almost perfect score in her audition.
The festival was a couple, a week and a half ago.
Right.
She was first chair of the group, and she was featured solo, she just missed the orchestra, a higher-level group, by just a very few points.
Karina Friend.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, that, I thought of that when it was mentioned at the Intermediate School, that they had a student going to the Intermediate Western Regional. I was like, well, we got a high school one, too. I had to share that piece of it with you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mark, I just want to say that, basically, I attended the Shelton Innovation School, and I asked, it was, it was just an exciting event to see what was going on, and again, to echo something that Dave said tonight, there is so much going on that within the budget, hopefully, we can expand the innovation program to the eighth grade and move forward into the high school. But you talk about energy, you talk about excitement, you talk about focus, it was there, not only the students, but the teachers. And it, a couple of times, I didn't know which was the teacher and which was the student, because they were engaged with the students. As a matter of fact, I asked, and I partake, I partook with one of them, I think it was Erica's class, correct me, I think that was her, asking the students different questions and really getting involved. So, it was very exciting. The other thing is, which I'm sure everyone has seen, again, what we are putting forward is the use of the libraries. I had the opportunity, when we were first talking about that through the Teaching and Learning Committee, it made the front page of the paper. Excellent, excellent. Again, for the public, and especially for those that we'll be talking to with respect to the budget, these are the things that they should see, because this is what we're looking for to move to the 21st century. Other than that, I also attended the open house at Shelton High School, and again, especially when the music performance started, I think a few of us got up and, you know, we were toe-dancing underneath the seats. But again, the energy stole, especially by Mrs. Keller, I think that's the most I've ever heard, and the dynamics that she put forward was tremendous. So, again, if the people out there didn't understand what we have here to educate the students, they're missing something. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I, it's unusual for me to have comments and highlights, but I also participated in, in what we did at the Intermediate School. And the thing that really struck me was when we went down to the garden lab, and the discussion that the teacher had about the kids building the, I'm going to call it the farm bot.
That's it.
That they were, for the first time, many of them were using hand tools, wrenches and screwdrivers and so forth. And it, it, it struck me as a kid, I would spend my summers with hammers and nails and saws, and that's what we did, and they don't do that anymore. And then I thought about the, I think it's Liberty Mutual Auto Insurance ad, where the kid has a flat tire, and he picks up the phone and calls Liberty Mutual, they come out, take it, and the other one calls his dad, and he doesn't know what a lug wrench is. They don't get that exposure. And I thought that that was really terrific, that these kids get to play with tools, because not everybody's going to sit at a computer for eight, ten hours a day, and they need to be able to fix things at home. I thought that was just an excellent program, and what the teacher was doing, and raising food, and, and the tilapia that they will eventually eat, it's going to be quite interesting.
Anyone else?
My brother invited me to see the adaptations presented by the drama club, and I've gone once before, and all the classes from Shelton High, they put on a great show. The dancing was great, singing was great, it was just a total good night out, so keep up the good work at the high school. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I think we should have a shout-out to what, and I hate to show, but we learned that we're expanding our college course curriculum at the high school with, working with University of Bridgeport and with the two community colleges. It just expands and elevates the quality of the schools, and when kids apply to college, colleges look at those kind of things, and that's how they evaluate the school system. So, it's kudos to, to the staff there, and, and to the headmaster, mistress, whatever.
Next-year principal.
Next-year principal.
When's our...
That, you know, that says a lot for, for the system.
When's our next evaluation?
The ask question.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay. I guess I will go last and just quickly say that I agree with all of the comments other people have made, and I will also chime in that Deb Keller's speech on the other night was just, I've, I've never seen so much energy from you.
I'm voting for Mayor 2021.
Well, I'll tell you, you, you're likely to get my vote in that case. I, I just thought it was terrific, and your enthusiasm and your passion for education really showed in that presentation. So, we've had an incredibly busy couple of weeks. I thank everyone for your help and assistance, and with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.